Thank you, folks. My name is Nick Davis, a member of the Executive Board of the Missoula County Democrats. Welcome to the Candidate Forum for Missoula City Council for the candidates running in wards one to three. Our candidates tonight, we have two Ward one candidates, Eric Melson, Gwen Nicholson. In the first Ward two seat, the two-year seat vacated by Jordan Hess when he took the mayorship, Ciara Farmer, Timothy Garrison. In the four-year Ward two seat, Merta Becerra and Rebecca Dawson are here. Do we have one Rebecca? Rebecca is not here, my bad, yet, she may be here. And then in Ward three, we have Gwen Jones and Sam Kula. Thanks to MCAT, Missoula Community Access Television back there, which is live streaming this forum on its Facebook page. The presentation is being recorded by MCAT as part of the Media Assistance Grant donated to the Missoula Democrats by MCAT. Recording of this video will be available immediately afterwards on MCAT's Facebook page and then shortly thereafter on their YouTube page as well. So for folks who ask you how the forum went, you can just send them a link if you don't want to explain the whole dang thing. This forum, sponsored by the Missoula County Dems. The Dems believe that an informed public is critical to the success of our democracy, and we thank you all for taking the time to listen and inform yourselves tonight. If you're interested, please stop at the table outside, sign up for the email list, and you'll receive updates from the Missoula Dems. For those folks that might be watching this on a stream or a recording, you can also find that information to get on the email list at the Missoula Dems webpage. We will begin tonight by acknowledging that here in Missoula, we are in the Aboriginal territories of the Salish and Kalispel peoples. We honor the path they have always shown for us in caring for this place for generations to come. We thank the Cultural Council for this language, as we also thank and acknowledge the indigenous inhabitants of western Montana. As part of this acknowledgement, we situate ourselves as guests actively working against colonialism and injustice. We thank the people of Turtle Island, the first people, for the privilege of learning in this space. Now I'm going to hand things over to tonight's moderator, Dr. Brian Chaffin from the University of Montana.
All right. Thank you, thank you. I don't know if I've done anything to need a hand clap, but thank you very much, I really appreciate it, yet. Good evening, everyone, good evening, Missoula, thanks for being here, good evening, candidates, we really appreciate you joining us tonight. The goal of tonight's forum is for our community to meet you, specifically the candidates for city council in wards one through three. There'll be a primary election, probably not prevalent or not important to anyone in the room tonight, for Ward five only on Tuesday, September 12th, and then there will be the general city council election and the mayoral election on Tuesday, November 7th. You can find all the information you need about this and the election at the Missoula County Elections website, so please check that if you're not registered to vote yet, make sure that you get that in order before the election. If you missed any of the Mayor Candidate Forum and would like to get to know the candidates, it's available for viewing on MCAT's webpage and also on their YouTube channel, so check that out. So the structure of tonight's forum, I'm going to ask you all a series of questions. We're going to go ward by ward on the answers to that questions or those questions, and I'm going to mix it up, so I'll go one, or the three, I'll go two, we'll mix it up the best I can. I apologize if I make you answer back to back or that I don't give everybody a fair shot, but I've tried to give everybody the shot to answer first and answer last, so we'll keep that going. I'd like you to keep your answer to the allotted time. We have Pam, Pam raise your hand, Pam is the timekeeper, please do not disturb or disrespect Pam. Pam was going to hand up or hold up the yellow card when there's 15 seconds left in your allotted time, and then the red card when it's time for you to be wrapped up, not to wrap it up, but to be wrapped up. And I'll help Pam enforce that, just so we can stick to time and respect everybody's time in the room tonight. We'll have two rounds of questions, the first round of question will be two minutes, I'll give you a little bit longer, and then the next round of questions will be a minute and a half, it'll be about 90 seconds, and then if we can get to it, we'll do a lightning round, which will be very, very fast at the end, and those are kind of fun, and if anybody watched the mayoral debate, it was quite fun, and we hope to repeat that here tonight. So, audience, while the candidates are speaking, feel free to write down any additional questions you have on the note cards that you were given when you walked in. If anybody needs a note card, please raise your hand now, and members of the Missoula Democrats will hand that out to you. We'll pick these up partway through, I'm going to mention that between some of our questions, we'll pick these up and then we'll ask audience questions partway through the forum, I wanted to call it the debate, but I think we're just going to engage with each other tonight. All right, one last thing, a note about respect. I don't foresee any issues with this tonight, but we're all here out of deep interest and respect for our community and our democracy, which includes respect for each other. I ask that both the audience and the candidates keep their comments civil and respectful of each other in a variety of viewpoints, so I doubt we'll have any trouble with that, but I just wanted to mention it, thank you. Let's get started, y'all ready? Okay. First, I'd like you all to introduce yourselves to the audience. As a starting point, we want to know who you are as people and what experiences shaped your core values and led you to run for city council. So the first question is two-part, pay attention here. The first one, spend one minute if you can telling us a little bit about who you are, including your background and role in the community. Next, as part of this question, so maybe a second minute, it's a two-minute question, tell us in your view, what does it mean to be a Missoulian? Tell us what defines this community for you. You have two minutes to answer these question in total. So I will let Eric Melson from Ward one go first with two minutes on the clock. There's a little delay on the mic once you turn it on. This is a great reminder that all, everyone with a mic probably needs to turn it on and then turn it off in between their speaking so we can preserve battery, and there's a little bit of a delay.
Great. Does this work?
Yep.
Awesome. Well, thanks, Missoula County Democrats, for hosting, thanks, everybody, for being here. My name's Eric Melson, I'm running for Ward one. I've lived in Missoula for 15 years now, 12 of those years I was a renter. I now call the Lower Rattlesnake home with my wife and our 16-year-old black lab, Pogi. My wife works at the university, she's the Director of Sustainability. I work for a small nonprofit called Public Land Solutions. My background is in conservation and recreation policy. I've worked in Washington DC for a number of years for a national organization called Outdoor Alliance. Also worked with former Governor Steve Bullock on a year-long study looking at our state park system, why it's failing and how we can make it better. I was a registered lobbyist in Helena for the 2021 session, worked for a bunch of different clients, including Montana Backcountry Hunters and Anglers, the naturopathic physicians, and a bunch of other folks. I am interested in running because I love this place. I've benefited so much from Missoula, I love the community here, and in my spare time, I like to get outside, I volunteer in the community, I'm a radio DJ here at KFGM 101.5, been on several nonprofit boards in the community, I volunteer in the trails community. And the second question, you know, I want to be respectful that I think being a Missoulian means a lot of different things to a lot of different people, especially for folks that have been here a lot longer than I have, but to me, being a Missoulian means being connected to people, place, and planet. I've been really fortunate to be able to travel around and visit a lot of amazing places, and nowhere have I been is, has the sense of community and the sense of place that we have in Missoula and the commitment to protecting this place, so I just want to give back as much as I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Eric. Now we'll move to Gwen Nicholson, also from Ward one.
Hello, everybody. Namnahtpasaya, thank you, everybody, for being here. My name is Gwen Nicholson. I am Salish, Kootenai, and Shitsamish, an enrolled member in the Coeur d'Alene Tribe, but my folks are from the Flathead Res. I was born and raised in Missoula, so I've been here for all 26 years, went to school here, from head start all the way to getting my bachelor's degree in journalism from the University of Montana. I've worked my whole adult life here. Missoula is my home. My father was a firefighter here, he was Assistant City Chief for a time before he retired, and I saw a lot of kind of how the city works from his perspective as both a firefighter, a public servant, and a union leader, and that really shaped kind of my initial sense of what Missoula is, and also kind of what's possible in Missoula and what's important in Missoula. I love this place with all of my heart. I always think about it whenever I'm up on Waterworks Hill, and you get that beautiful downtown view from, you know, you can see downtown laid out behind you all the way to the south hills. This is a really incredible place, and I've been embedded in all kinds of different communities while I've been here, whether that's through the university, through the queer community, which I am so incredibly happy to be a part of, through the indigenous community, through all kinds of different places. There's so much diversity, and there's so much incredible things happening here all the time. And, you know, in terms of what it means to be a Missoulian, I think what I really found out what it means to be a Missoulian this year. So in my capacity as a Communications Director for the Montana Budget and Policy Center, I was in Helena during this last session, and I saw a lot of, you know, the things that were happening to everybody there, but especially our trans representatives, S.J. Howell and Zoe Zephyr ultimately culminating in Zoe's censure. Missoula's incredible, thank you.
Thanks for wrapping it up, I appreciate it. Now we'll hear from Ward two, and specifically the two-year seat that's open in Ward two, and we'll start with Ciara Farmer.
Thank you. My name's Ciara Farmer, I also was born and raised in Missoula County, I grew up in Sealy Lake, actually, and moved here in junior high. And I went to the University of Montana for my undergrad and my masters of public administration. I'm raising my two kiddos on the west side, I've lived on the west side on and off since the 90s, and I work for the Department of Natural Resources, my watch is actually buzzing like crazy right now because there's some fires on the east side of the state that just started, and I need to know about them, I guess. So I, what I, I filled Jordan C, I've been on council since October, and I have to say that, you know, the reason I really threw my hat in the ring is because I do love Missoula also, and we're at a pivotal point right now, and I really want to guide us in the right place, in the right direction. And to me, to be a Missoulian, so one of my favorite, a quote that I always laugh about that hangs up on the south side Kettle House, actually, is "Missoula's golden age was two years before you moved here," and we always want to make sure you know that. And so it kind of cracks me up a little bit, but it's, you know, it doesn't matter how long you've been in Missoula, it matters whether you really love it and care about it, and that's what makes you a Missoulian. And that, I think, is truly whether your favorite thing about Missoula is the open space, or the parks, or the breweries, whatever it is that you love about Missoula, I think we all can kind of get on the same page, that we all love Missoula, and that's why we're here, and we want it to thrive. And we are at this point right now where it's going to be really important that we guide it in the right direction. So before, also about me, before I was on council, I was on the planning board for a short stint. And a little bit more about me, I will probably show you a picture of my dog before I'll show you a picture of my kids, and in my spare time, I like to make jewelry, so that's a little bit about me.
All right, thanks, Ciara. Now we'll hear from Timothy Garrison, the other candidate for the two-year seat in Ward two.
Thank you. I grew up in Troy, Montana, graduated high school there, and I went into the military, a fifth-generation Montanan. My great-grandfather came out here in 1909, and in 1910, his father and brother and two sisters and mom came out, and they fought on the fire, the big burn in 1910, of course, everyone in Montana at that time did. So I was in the military, they sent me to the University of Idaho where I got my degree in anthropology, focused on cultural anthropology with a minor in sociology. My son, I have four children, and three grandchildren, all here in Montana, and since I got back to Missoula, I've been serving on the north side, west side leadership team as their chair last year, volunteered throughout the community with different youth organizations, put in a couple fences at Fort Missoula in the last year, built a, sorry, a garden house, a greenhouse at Sentinel High School over the summer, and worked with the Lowell Elementary School Garden throughout the summer as well. And why I love Missoula is because you can go out of town quickly with your dog, go for a trail hike, something like that, you can come into town, you have that small-town atmosphere, but you also have some of the big-city amenities, and so wrapping it up, I've already served in the military, and I've served my country, and I want to just continue to serve my community. Thank you.
Thanks, Timothy, appreciate that. We'll now hear from, we'll stick with Ward two, and we'll hear from candidates from the four-year seat, and that would be Merta Becerra.
Thank you. My name is Merta Becerra, and I was born and raised in Chile. It's a country well-known for its wonderful people, fantastic wine, and also decades-long dictatorship. So growing up with politics as a daily conversation, it really shaped who I am and why I believe in community and why I believe in serving. I do believe that community at its most local level is how you can change an entire country, so that inspired me to run and continue to run. A little bit about me, I work for the city and the county here in Missoula as Land Use and Transportation Planner. I believe it has served me well on council, as I truly believe that we need to be really intentional on how we grow, but also make sure that all of our fellow Missoulians have a place to live, whether you rent or whether you own. It's incredibly important that in order to make our community stronger, we need to give people an opportunity to put roots down in this beautiful place. You know what defines Missoula and Missoulians? I was once told by someone who lived here for a very long time that you can consider yourself a Missoulian if you leave and come back, because the pull of this place is so strong that you will find a way back to Missoula. And I was lucky to leave and come back, but I realize that nowadays that's incredibly difficult for some people, and so I want to work on ensuring that whoever leaves and wants to come back has a place here in Missoula. Thanks.
Great, thanks, Merta. Rebecca Dawson is the other candidate for the four-year seat in Ward two, and she has not joined us tonight. We'll move to Ward three, and we'll hear first from Gwen Jones.
Is it on? Oh, there we go. Good evening, my name is Gwen Jones. I was trying to think of the things I wanted to tell you about myself, and I've had several generations of my family that have grown up in different parts of Montana. I was born and raised in Missoula, and then, as many people from my generation, we left after high school, either to go to college or for jobs, because there were not a lot of jobs in Missoula back then, it's actually a much more diverse economy now, but back then, it was harder than it is now. So I went away for 20 years, and then I came back. I talked my husband into moving back here, he's from California, talked him into moving here with our three kids to raise our three kids, because I think it's such a special place. And it's funny, in college, I thought about getting into local government and government on some level, I went off to law school, and then I had student loans, I had to get them paid off, started having a family, I just kind of never went in that direction until I was on the Neighborhood Council for Rose Park and got involved with that, and then got on to city council, and I've really enjoyed it ever since, it's a ton of hard work, and it's a hard time. There's a lot of things going on in our world, and in our state, and in our community, so it's challenging. But I would, when I talk about Missoula, I always think about the history here, which this was a blue-collar town surrounded by gorgeous, gorgeous mountains and rivers running through it, and an amazing university in the middle of it, which creates a really interesting mix of people. And when I was growing up, you know, the professors would all go down to Charlie's Bar, and Lee Nye was taking pictures in the back, in the alley, that all went up, then at Charlie's Bar. That's just real, and you can't make that up, and I think that creates such community when people are interacting and embracing each other and getting to know each other. But one of the favorite things I have in my mind about Missoula, Merta talks about people coming back. Oh, shoot, I have a great story, but okay, I'll tell it with another.
You can build it into another question, yeah. Thanks very much, Gwen, thanks for wrapping it up, I appreciate that. And last from Ward three, we'll hear from Sam Kula.
All right, hi, everybody, my name's Sam Kula, I'm running for city council, Ward three. I was born in Mineral County, and I moved here when I was six years old so that my dad could take a job, he worked for the federal government, for the Forest Service. I attended Missoula County Public Schools throughout Ward three, Paxton, Washington, which is actually a different ward, and then back to Ward three for Hellgate. I went to the University of Montana, and I got my undergraduate degree as a double-major in Spanish literature and human geography, AKA just went to college. And so I went and traveled for a while and worked all over the place. I worked for a long time as a whitewater river guide throughout the Cascades in the Sierra. I worked as a backcountry emergency medical instructor for ARI, Backcountry Medicine out of Missoula, got to travel and see a lot of the country with that company. After working for ARI, I did a long time working in industrial wind energy maintenance, where again, I got to travel more and see a ton of the country from a clean-energy point of view, and that was like a major formative experience for me. After that, I did about a year working in Clean Water Act Enforcement out of Tacoma, Washington, for a small nonprofit there that monitored the port of Tacoma. And then, you know, Mickey, my partner, and I, sitting in the back over there, decided we were going to move back to Montana and start a family, sorry to draw the attention to you, and COVID hit, you know, we have a lovely four-year-old now, but it was pretty tough getting started then, especially tough because I chose to go back and get my masters at the U, once again, in education, just so that I could spend more time really working with students. Throughout all those previous jobs I listed, I've always been a substitute teacher for Missoula County Public Schools, haven't done it in a few years, but since I got my masters, I've been lucky enough to start working with another school called Aquinas International Academy, where we teach basically private school students from all over the world. I teach, real quick, personal finance, environmental sciences, and English literature, and I'm about to run out of time, where I was going to tell you what I think it means to Missoulian, to be a Missoulian, but basically what it is, is we take care of each other.
Great wrap-up, thanks, Sam, I appreciate that. Thanks to all the candidates, it's great to get to know a little bit about you personally. Let's pivot now to learn a little bit more about the issues that face Missoula and your stance on those issues. Audience, this is a great time, over the next three questions, to write down additional questions that you have, and after that third question, we'll send some folks around to pick up those cards, you don't need to bring them to us, but we'll come get them after the next three questions. So this, candidates, this is, this will be about 40 minutes, there'll be four questions, and each of you will get a minute and a half for your response to these questions. We'll stick by going ward to ward, but we're going to switch up who gets to go first. All right, ready? Housing. Housing. Housing is a major issue in Missoula. On one hand, far too many Missoula residents are unhoused, and shelter capacity is limited. On the other hand, housing costs are rising faster than household incomes. The median family income in Missoula County has increased just 15% since 2010, while the median home sales price has risen 109%. What would your priorities be as a city council member to address these housing challenges? And we will start this round, we will go to the end, and we'll start with Sam.
Check, check. Thanks for giving me the back-to-back, get it out of the way fast. Housing is definitely not even the elephant in the room, because we are talking about it, it's the number-one issue, and I'm glad to hear you call out those stats about how much faster housing is becoming expensive compared to wages. There's a lot of different things, from my opinion as a renter, and a lot of the opinions of people I've spoken to that go into this. One of the main things we need to do is make it so people can afford to live here, right? So yeah, we can do things like build more affordable housing, which we're doing, and we should continue to do, and we should incentivize more affordable housing. We should also redefine a little bit what affordable is, so that it's actually affordable, not just affordable on the books. Inflation, prices, wages, those all go into it, just saying something's affordable because of a statute from some other place and time doesn't really qualify it, in my opinion. Other things we can do to make housing more affordable, especially in the national environment with, you know, bank interest rates through the roof, you know, relatively speaking for our generation, we can look at what people are getting paid, and maybe try to help people earn a better living in Missoula. We can do that a lot of different ways, we can talk about living wages, we can also try to attract more well-paying jobs to this town, so that if you are here and you're, you know, willing to go out there and get a job, you can live here, and so that you're not working 40 hours a week plus a side gig to rent and hopefully be able to hang on to your place. I could go on and on about this, and I hope we get a chance to talk about it again, but housing is definitely the most important issue tied into all these other issues tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. We'll stick with Ward three, and we'll move to Gwen.
Okay, ready to start? Go, Pam. Housing is a huge issue, and council has actually been working on it for a long time, and I'm grateful for that, because we actually laid a great foundation to be in the unfortunate situation that we're in right now, but we are actually ahead of a lot of other cities in Montana, because we passed our housing policy back in 2019, and we created our Affordable Housing Trust Fund in 2020. Wages have gone up, it may not feel like it, but frankly, wages have gone up. There are a lot of different tools, a lot of federal and state tools that are tied to those different levels of affordability, so it is kind of a rigid program, but our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, I think, is a key, key tool, because it is flexible, it can get in there and close the gap on funding stacks. Places like Bonnie's Place, the trailer park that was purchased by the people who live there, Affordable Housing Trust Fund came in and helped close that funding stack. Our Affordable Housing Trust Fund is an excellent tool, I sit on the Resident Oversight Committee as council president for that, and they actually are rewriting the levels of income necessary to get benefit from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, but I think the key thing is we need to find permanent funding for that trust fund in the long run. Also, Missoula Redevelopment Agency, we're going to hear it in council tomorrow, they are able to now start putting money into brick-and-mortar workforce housing as of, within the last month, from the government, from the state government allowing that. So these are huge tools that are coming down the road.
Thanks, Gwen, you can leave the mic on, and we'll just pass it to Merta for Ward two.
Thank you. Yeah, housing, the ramifications of housing are significant, and I do think that when we talk about housing, it's not just adding more units to Missoula, but it's also looking at what else makes it difficult for people to afford a home. So in my mind, we need to be looking comprehensively at the number of units that we put in place, but also transportation cost, childcare cost, living wages, all of it. All those factors are part of what makes someone able to afford a home or not. I do think in the city, we have been making progress with our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, I think we need to continue to leverage collaboration with public and private housing developers, and I do think that our code reform is going to help significantly to really evaluate what lands we have in Missoula where we could have more housing on the ground. But overall, I think that we need to look at housing, not just as, you know, the number of units that we're able to put on the ground, but rather what makes housing affordable or not for many Missoulians, so, you know, living wage, transportation, childcare, everything that goes into being able to afford to live in this place.
Great, thank you. We'll move to Timothy, also with Ward two.
Thank you. Yeah, the affordable housing, I think, is affected by many things, wouldn't be able to cover them all tonight, but I'm going to try to cover some of them. One of them would be the code, as was mentioned, some of those things in the code are, like, we're currently looking at a project over on Scott Street, and part of the code is, you have to have a certain number of parking spaces to build the resident project in there, and you also have to build in landscaped islands and landscaped borders around between the parking lots and the streets going by. And when you're talking affordable housing, those types of things aren't important to the person who just needs a house to live in, and so some of this is code reform and getting beyond that. The other thing is the tax reform. Right now, you have organizations and corporations and individuals paying into the taxes, you have a budget, and you have to meet that budget, and that comes from taxes. As you make cuts in other areas, the property owners are taking a lot of that on their shoulders. And when you're a property owner and you're renting, you're not going to take it yourself, that rent's going to go up. So we have to find a different way to tax the property owners maybe less, and some of that is in our industry in tourism. that is in our industry in tourism. And we don't really capture the taxes off the tourist base that comes through Missoula every year. And if we could do that, that would be an option, possibly, to lower the taxes, lower the cost that the owners, homeowners are paying, and lower the rent. Thank you.
Thanks, Timothy. We're here from Sierra, also with Ward Two.
All right, thank you. Yeah, affordable housing, thanks, Timothy. I think that was, I agree with a lot of that. The affordable housing issue is really the issue that got me the most motivated to put my hat in the ring for city council, because it's heartbreaking to see so many friends and family just priced out of Missoula completely and forced to leave, because they missed that small window when it was potentially affordable. And so I think that the code reform process is, I'm actually really excited about it. I think that this is a pivotal point in time for us, and that is another reason why I wanted to stay on council, because let's be honest, it's not like it's the most fun job to be. So I'm staying here, because I want to do the hard work, that actually, this is going to be a hard process, and it's going to be really, really important. The Affordable Trust Fund also, which has been mentioned, I got the opportunity to be on the scoring committee this last round, and we were able to score, we were able to fund every project except for one. And that is huge, when you think about the impact that that's going to have on our community. We are able to supplement some of these projects, some in incremental ways and some in really, really huge ways. And that's a unique opportunity that Missoula has, and I think that we should continue to fund the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and make it larger, if that. And then the other thing I just want to say is that we're never going to build our way out of this. It's not going to happen, so we have to get creative, and we have to start working with public and private partnerships to make it actually work.
All right, thanks, Sierra. We'll move to Ward One now, and we'll start this one with Gwen.
So I just want to highlight, you know, we've been talking about the obstacles that are in the way of kind of creating more affordable housing. We have this incredibly regressive property tax structure that's been kind of imposed on us by the state legislature, along with limits on the kind of local option taxes that we can do to like get the burden off of homeowners. I definitely agree in terms of zoning. There's ways in which we can smooth the development of new housing that's going to kind of take that burden off, but I agree with Sam that it needs to be truly affordable. You know, but I want to mention, you know, I'm not a homeowner, I'm a renter. I'm a tenant, and I think we need to also include that in the equation, too. I think we need to expand protections for renters and tenants. I think, you know, I've worked with the Missoula Tenants Union, they're doing a big drive for a universal right to counsel for tenants in eviction disputes. I think we need to look at getting the eviction rate down, making it easier to be a renter and a tenant. I also think we need to look at alternative ways of getting people into positions where they can become homeowners in one way or another. You know, in our own ward, we've had the Wolf Avenue Co-op go up, which was the result of a lot of hard work from both the tenants themselves, who rose up to kind of take control of their own housing situation, from the North Missoula Community Development Corporation, which did a lot of great work. And I think the city could be doing more to kind of facilitate those sort of developments, because I think that's genuinely the future of affordable housing in Missoula, is those kinds of communal and cooperatively-owned housing projects.
Ben, Eric?
Yeah, thanks. Oops, sorry. Yeah. Almost there. Okay, there we go. Yeah, I agree with a lot of what's been said in terms of the term affordability. I think we need to change that to attainability, and it is very unfortunate to see so many people get forced out. I know what it's like to have to work four jobs at a time to make a life here, and feel like if you miss a paycheck, that you're going to get evicted. I was evicted once, when a landlord wanted to make improvements to a house on such short notice. So I agree entirely about strengthening landlord-tenant laws to give tenants more power. I think in terms of building more affordable housing, it's been mentioned, but code reform and zoning is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to do that. Part of that is the vision. What do we want our community to look like in the future, and how can we plan to make it livable and vibrant? That happens through zoning. Part of it is the regulatory side, too. Like, we have to make code reform work for the regulations for the sewer districts. The other one is process. Code reform can be used as a bludgeon to say no, and we should look at how to streamline that to make sure that we're actually able to build the units that we need. The biggest gap right now is housing between $300,000 and $450,000, which is still a lot of money, given that the average earnings for a family of four is $86,000, and the median home price right now is $530,000. I agree entirely with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and I think that we need to advocate at the state level to get more funding to fund that.
Great, thanks, candidates. First, we made it through the first question. Seven of you, this takes a while, and I really appreciate, I appreciate your patience, but I also appreciate your ability to stick to time and your willingness to do that, so thanks. We'll move on to question number two. There's talk of expanding the city budget. How would you balance the priorities, excuse me, how would you balance prioritizing funding decisions against or with working to support the values of those in your ward? So how do you balance your priorities for funding with the values of those in your ward? And we'll start with Ward Two, and we'll go Timothy, Sierra, and then Merta.
So for funding, I mean, funding the budget, of course, comes from our tax base. There's some grants and other options out there, but the tax base is, again, what I already mentioned, capturing the tourism that comes through this city. The, sorry, I'm going to ask you, could you repeat the question?
Talk about your funding priorities and also the values of the people in your ward. How on city council will you work towards specific funding priorities that support the values of the people that you will represent in your ward?
Thank you. The values of the people in my ward would all obviously be the priority. It's not necessarily my values, as much as representing those who have elected those leaders to be in those positions. But representing in my ward goes a lot towards making sure that the safety of the ward, there's a little bit of petty theft in the area, bicycles, stuff like that, can't necessarily be left outside. But the streets are in disrepair in many places, and you can call, you can put it on the website, and they'll be out normally same day, next day, to fix those potholes. But those potholes getting fixed isn't fixing the entire streets. The infrastructure of the streets is questionable and some, needs more investment in those areas. But also the traffic at the intersections, arterials that roll through Phillips Street, going through to Scott Street. There's a lot of intersections in there and crosswalks that are dangerous or are just uncontrolled intersections. And beyond that is just development in the ward, development of open-city property, and by making that city available, it's going to be more affordable, rather than general contractors having to purchase land.
Thank you.
All right, ready, Pam? Okay, so, yeah, we just went through this with the budget process, and to me, the number-one priority, that the most, the biggest responsibility of city government is public safety. And when you look at our budget, it reflects public safety. And I don't mean public safety just in police and fire, I mean, safety for everyone. That means homes for everyone, that means sidewalks people can walk on, that means streets that are plowed, that means bike lanes that you can actually travel in. I think that, to me, when you really look at the budget, that is a huge piece of it, and we don't have a lot of discretionary funds outside of that. And then the other thing about Ward Two is that we do account for 50% of Missoula's growth this last year alone. We are a massive, massive ward. We are growing at an exponential rate, and we have to be really, really smart about the development that's happening in Ward Two. Sorry, I'm distracted by the hail. And I think that that is the, what is the most important to Ward Two, is that we are seeing so much development, and a lot of people are really frustrated, because the speed limits don't reflect the streets that we've been built, that we've built there. Mary Jane Boulevard is a really good example. There's people that are super frustrated, that is too fast in there. We have to be able to build good streets, good sidewalks, and good parks, so that people have a community that they want to live in, and that they want to be able to stay in. So to me, those are the priorities, public safety and smart infrastructure.
Merta?
I don't think the skies like your question. We just went through the budget approval process, and that was, it's always difficult. I think it's the single most difficult night for a lot of us on council, and this year was no different. In fact, it was significantly worse, because we are looking at increasing property taxes, and we know what that means for a lot of Missoulians. I would say that my priorities are my constituents' priorities, and my constituency is pretty diverse. For some of them, it means, as an elderly woman, being able to remain in their house, or it could mean a young university student being able to rent. It means having sidewalks where someone on a wheelchair can be able to easily access the community. It means a lot of things for a lot of people, so when we are told that we should not be funding wants, and that we should only focus on the needs, that's a really subjective definition. And I think that's the part that I struggle with the most. It's not so much what I want to see happen versus what my constituents want to see happen. It's what is a want and what is a need. And I would say that if you ask different people what that means to them, you get different answers. And so it's a difficult process, but I think engagement and having people participate in the process, hearing from my constituents, is what keeps me moving forward on what's important to, hopefully, all of them.
Great, thanks. I would push back and say that the skies are just impatient for the lightning round, and so they... All right, sorry. Well, thanks for that answer. We will move to Ward One, and we'll go Gwen, and then Eric.
Yeah, so I think first and foremost, city services always have to be kind of served first. I think that's kind of the lifeblood of what makes a city tick, you know, especially when, you know, I think the main things that have been brought up here are like a lot of transit and infrastructure, you know, like, Missoula has the number-one transit system in North America, you know? I think that's an incredible thing. You know, I think that comes with like making these priorities, you know? The number-one thing I hear when I'm campaigning, especially in the north side, is like, when is that pedestrian bridge going to open? You know, when are my sidewalks going to be fixed, because I can't get around, you know? There's a lot of people who are mobility-challenged or are wheelchair users, who are closed off from a lot of aspects of just everyday life as a result of, you know, infrastructure. So prioritizing that is going to be a big thing, but I think, you know, the larger discussion to have is also just like, when we're making these decisions about the budget, how do we communicate to the people in the city what our priorities are? And, you know, how do we get across that, you know, we're trying to stretch a smaller pie and make it go around to everybody, you know? But that's something I think about in my day-to-day work as communications director for the Budget and Policy Center, you know, is like, how can we get people involved and active in making these decisions in the city, and bringing these things to us, and becoming more active in that process? I also think it's, you know, looking into other forms, you know, requesting more state and federal funding, really being dogged about it, and, you know, putting our priorities first. Thank you.
Yeah, this is a really tricky one, and as a lot of people have mentioned, balancing the wants versus the needs is the number-one job of city council, and local government is set up to deliver you services that you pay for, sewer, water, fire, police. These are critical services that make society livable, and we have to deliver on those things. I think that we really need to think about what kind of community we want to build for the future. How do we tackle growth? And how do we build a built environment that supports everyone in this community? How do we fund those things? And every single year, we're having to look down the barrel of raising taxes to pay for the services that we provide. If you look through the budget, it is bare bones. There's not that much fluff in there. I think that a linchpin here is fixing the property tax system that we're in, which is fundamentally broken. I think that if we can reform our property tax structure, that will free up the ability for us to pay for more wants and more needs. It'll allow us to diversify the revenue streams that we get, so that we can actually chart our own destiny into the future. We're really restricted with the limited amount of funding that we have right now, and if we are going to continue to grow, which we are, we should do that in an intentional way, being able to fund the things that we want. If we want a world-class library like this, right now, we have to bond for it. And that's how we have to pay for a lot of the amenities that we want in this community, which is really unfortunate.
Thanks to you both. We'll move to Ward Three, and we will hear from Sam, and then Gwen.
Oh, check, check. Hopefully, the lightning punctuates the right parts of my answer. So I definitely am looking at the option, the opportunity to serve on city government as a representative deal. While I do have my own opinions about what I would like to fund, and I can rattle this off for you, you know, I'd like to see bike trails and the bus system be more efficient and stuff like that. When I'm out there knocking doors, I'm hearing a lot of concern about different issues from people that live in the ward. You know, so first of all, I have to find a way to stay connected with those people after I'm elected, so that those issues stay in the front of my mind, and I don't get distracted by, you know, my own internal story, right? The issues that I'm hearing people talk about when I go door-to-door in Ward Three, one of the biggest things I hear about, you know, in the wake of this property tax increase, especially from people living on fixed incomes, like seniors or people on social services, is just how do they stay in their homes as the prices go up and they're not getting more money? You know, so some things I would like to look at would be expanding and exploring more tax credits for folks in that situation. You know, my own mother is retired and lives in a house that who knows if she'll be able to continue to pay for. So it's like, it's personal when it comes down to that stuff, too. Other things that I think we really need to focus on in our budget, you know, it's going to change as time goes on, hopefully, but we need to focus on funding the housing changes and the affordable housing changes that we need right now. I have some ideas about how we can do that, ways we can raise money to do that. Hopefully, some audience questions will come in about that, and we can talk about that. I'm watching my time tick away, and so, thank you.
Okay, so the question was, how do we balance, how do we balance the priorities and values of our ward with our approach to the budget? And it's a great question that I think all of us could write books about, but first of all, I'm really glad Eric mentioned tax reform, because it is a completely untenable and unsustainable situation to be in a position where we're raising taxes every year just to meet our baseline. And our baseline are collective bargaining agreements with the labor unions that encompass a big chunk of our city employees. And we have those obligations, and as well we should, because we want our people to be paid well enough so that they will stay in those jobs, and we will have good, experienced people in very difficult, challenging jobs. So first of all, we absolutely need tax reform. But when I look at the budget, I go back to our strategic plan, which we have had tons of input in over the years, the city's strategic plan. And we tweak every few years to reflect what our current community needs and wants are, and I look at those, and I go back to the strategic plan, because that's our, that's our north star, to try and do the most for most in our community. You will never please everyone in this job, you hope to please some. But not only working on the budget to do the best we can with very limited resources, but then periodically working on specific projects for my ward. So I've talked about getting bike lanes on the hip strip for years, and it's finally coming to fruition. That's, those are the kind of specific projects that advance the ward's values, I think.
Thank you. And thanks, everyone, for answering the question. We'll move on to the next question. Missoulians, Missoulians, are increasingly experiencing the impacts of climate change. From increased and prolonged heat waves, to the increases in sizes and intensity of nearby wildfires, what is the role, in your opinion, of the city council and city government generally, in mitigating and helping citizens adapt to climate change? We'll start back at Ward Two, and we will go with Merta, Sierra, and Timothy.
Can you hear me? Yeah. I, I think that one of the main responsibilities that we have as a government is to educate, provide resources for our community to be well-prepared for the changes that are coming. We know it's happening. I do think that there are certain populations within our community that are more vulnerable to climate change. We have seen that happen already, and so I think a focused approach from the city to helping those specific populations is important. Also, I think we need to lead by example, and we're doing that to whatever extent possible by doing an audit of our buildings and see how we can reduce our footprint on the environment. We are trying, whenever possible, to buy... We are trying, whenever possible, to buy vehicles and electrify our fleet. There are things that might not seem huge, but we are trying to do them because incrementally, I think we can have an effect on, move the needle, if you will, on, on climate change. But I do think that our main job as city council and as a government is to provide the tools to the community and to all the experts that we have in the community. We're lucky to have organizations in the community that deal with climate change on a daily basis and they're well-positioned to give us advice and give us a list of resources and, and ideas on how, on how, as a community, we can be ready for, for what's coming. I mean, look outside. Thanks.
Yeah, I recently had a conversation with one of my older good friends and she said, "Oh, climate change, your generation will figure that out. Oh, I don't have to think about it." And it was such a frustrating comment to hear because I was thinking, "Well, that's why we're in the situation we are in." This is a dire situation. I mean, we can't keep turning a blind eye to it. But the role of city government, I think, in it is, and I'm sure someone's going to say it, so I'll just start it, "To think local and act global." We're all going to say this at some point, but it is true. We have to think about our own city and what we can do. And we're making a lot of strides with our fleet and making our fleet more efficient and with Climate Smart Missoula and the 2050 Plan. But I think we, we can do more and I think that we should do more. I think that there's some other things that we could do, such as, you know, better recycling situations, glass recycling, composting, making buildings more efficient, exploring more sustainable public transportation, making multimodal travel actually a reality, make it so that we can use the bike lanes and they're not full of gravel and snow all the time. There's so many smaller things that we can do to make a lot of impact and we have to do it. We can't, we cannot keep pretending like the next generation is going to figure it out.
So Missoula already does a lot for the environment, I mean, as far as, we have the free bus transportation, we have bike lanes, we're putting in more bike trails. And these are all great things we do to help the environment. One of the things we run into, most of us, on a daily basis is coming to a stoplight and stopping, traffic holds up there, and then as soon as it turns green, you get to the next red light. Synchronizing the traffic lights throughout the city is a big step in keeping traffic moving so you're not sitting idling and adding a carbon footprint to the environment. Additionally, solar power. I don't know how many portions of the city's government has solar power. I know my house has solar power. My net zero electrical bill from April through November is a great benefit to me. Parking is also another thing. If we could build parking garages and parking hubs for mass transit so people could go to there, meet the bus there. The parking garage below us right now is a great example of that, but building parking garages for parking and maximizing the mass transit system, hubbing, linking them together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ward 2. We'll move over to Ward 3 and we'll go Gwen, then Sam.
So climate change is huge and we need to do everything we possibly can, but at the same time, we also have to run a city and provide services and make sure that police are a good quality police force and make sure that fire gets there in time to help somebody. So it's, I would love to put more towards climate change, but what I come back to is we do a fair amount, we need to do more, but the key is being strategic. And there are a couple of things in the pipeline that are coming to Missoula that we've been working on. The renewable rate option is a program that we have been working on. Brian von Losberg, our retired city council president, is working on it. That is a project with Northwestern Energy to create some clean energy generation and have it be available to Missoulians. So it's a complicated, complicated topic, but Brian is the kind of guy who can get over the finish line and I'm with our staff and I'm thrilled about that. Amber Sherrill recently championed something along with the mayor in our budget that we passed this, a couple of weeks ago, was it? To have an electrification expert. This is someone who is going to work on getting the Inflation Reduction Act grants written and get as much money into Missoula as possible. So we need to have that impact. And I just want to give a shout out to Mountain Line. They got that $39 million grant to build a new facility and they will be completely green and clean energy by 2035 with all of their fleet. So kudos to them.
Okay. So the climate issue is definitely top of mind for us. Right now, we're celebrating the Held versus Montana decision still a little bit. Also, in, you know, some of the educational work I do, I work with the University of Washington School of Oceanography where we do climate and ocean sciences all the time. And I talk to scientists about this and ask them, you know, what can we do? We have to do the basic things, right? Like improve our bicycle infrastructure and our bus systems. We're going to do all that. And we have to do the stuff where we do more local power generation, distributed energy. If we could do home and neighborhood scale energy and move away from the power company model, you know, this will take decades, obviously, to really pull that off, that would be pretty helpful, too. And that's all going to be site-specific. But in the big picture, we're not going to be able to innovate and invent our way 100% out of this problem. We're going to have to focus on behavior change. Some of that can be cultural, that we can do through stories and community building. Other, that's going to be practical. Like if we have neighborhoods where you can work and buy everything you need in that neighborhood and not have to leave, not have to drive, not have to worry about the bike lane, just stay in your neighborhood. We can do that through zoning, through practical solutions that just let people live a walkable life in their exact neighborhoods. We've got a lot of places in Missoula, South Hills, Franklin to the Fort, you know, parts of Miller Creek where you really have to drive to do anything. And if we can plan our city in a way that lets people move away from that, so we're only driving once in a while, that's pretty helpful as well. So those are some of my ideas.
All right, thanks Gwen, Sam. Let's move to Ward 1 and we'll go Eric, then Gwen.
Awesome, thanks. The reality is that cities are leading on the climate front. And this is the crisis of our generation and the, and future generations, but cities are uniquely positioned to get, get things done. Federal government is like an ocean liner. It takes a long time to turn. But luckily, during this administration, the largest investment in climate has come down for cities to take advantage of. And we're starting to see that right now with our ability to tap into some of these federal grants. So I do want to mention that the city has a ton of amazing plans right now. The Climate and Conservation Action Plan, Zero Waste, Zero Electricity. We're leading the state on climate as a municipality and there's a lot more that we can do. Gwen mentioned the renewable rate. The green tariff that Missoula, Bozeman, and Helena are working on would allow you, as ratepayers, the option to choose to pay a little bit more for a green energy option. That is amazing and I would love to see that actually come to fruition. The solar panel investment that the city made on the water treatment facility was the largest solar array at the time in Montana. Like, Missoula is leading on this. We can do more. I love the idea of intentional communities and zoning to make smaller, more diffuse communities, more sustainable, so that they have exactly what they need. But yeah, the reality is the city is doing awesome on this and we can continue doing great work.
Thank you. I, I kind of want to mention that I think I might have a slightly unique perspective here. I'm an indigenous person and, you know, I'm indigenous to here. This is the homeland for me. So I think, you know, in the same way that I think, you know, at the city level, we can be and should be incorporating climate solutions and thinking about ways in which we can be addressing the climate crisis in every decision that we make, I think we can also follow the lead from other cities and incorporate indigenous ways of knowing into our climate strategy, you know? And I think that starts with, you know, doing some reach-outs to tribal communities, you know, and, and we have a wealth of resources in town to do that. So kind of starting with that and incorporating that into other elements of our overall strategy. You know, I think a lot has been brought up about, like you say, intentional planning, using the zoning code reform as an opportunity to kind of be more thoughtful and deliberate about getting traffic under control and kind of increasing the amount of, you know, transit options that we have available to us, expanding the already incredibly excellent, I say this as a habitual bus rider, incredibly excellent transit system we have in the form of Mountain Line, making bike lanes actually safe and accessible to use and kind of making them more than just paint on the road, you know? I find that to be a huge, huge barrier to a lot of people who would otherwise stop using their cars as much and would instead switch to a bike, you know, and would actually find it way more convenient. So kind of looking into a holistic approach from that angle.
All right, thanks Eric and Gwen. Let's, before we move on to question four in this kind of context-specific round, I want to go to the audience real quick. If you have cards with audience questions on it that you haven't, that haven't been collected yet, hold those up. Folks will come around and collect those right now. Thank you so much for writing questions. Folks will come and grab those. All right, candidates, take a breath, quick breath. All right, you're doing great. Appreciate it. Yeah, Pam's the hero here, really. Pam is the hero here.
Pam is the glue that is holding us all.
Yeah, yeah. All right, everyone, here we go. So next, we really wanted to ask you all, Ward-specific question. We want to know a little bit about your ward and what's important to you there. So we're going to ask you to identify one issue that affects your ward specifically. And that's, that's tough, right? These, these issues are cross-cutting across Missoula. But pick one that's important to your ward and describe your approach to addressing the issue. You'll still have 90 seconds, a minute and a half. We'll start with Sierra and we'll go Timothy and then Merta.
Yeah, so like I said earlier, Ward 2 is a huge ward. We are 50% of the growth in Missoula and so we are seeing so much development in our ward. That's all, for folks that don't know the wards, that's all the way out to the airport. So that's all the development that's out on Mullen. And if you've driven out there, you cannot drive out there without seeing something being built right now. So as much as I would love to just talk about the west side because that's my hood, I, I know that that is one of the, the big issues right now is that all the development that's happening right now out on Mullen. Our ward also goes up to Grant Creek as well and there's also quite a bit of development happening that has happened there as well. So the, the question is, how will I, how will I prioritize it? To me, it's smart development. And that is what I think is the most important thing for that area. You know, we're seeing the north side and the west side, we're seeing so much development as well, so much infill, that sometimes I think some of these neighborhoods can feel a little bit forgotten. And we can feel like, well, how come we're getting all the development? And, and that, I think, is what we have to be really smart about, is good, good development, good annexations, and, and really pushing that developers have some sort of affordable component to it. And that is something that is hard to do, but we have to kind of push back, I think, a little bit and see what, what they can do to make it a little bit more affordable for the average Missoulian.
Great, thanks. And just to repeat, since you asked, I'll repeat the question. One issue, you did great, one issue that's important to your ward and your approach to addressing it, which is what you answered, so thank you.
Not to steal what she's talking about, but I agree with her 100%. And some of that is that we are building a new community out there behind the VA Center. And that new community is outside of the city limits at this point. They're working towards bringing that into the community, into the city limits. And by annexing more property into the city limits, you're going to increase the city's tax base as well. The, the ward in general, biggest thing that we, with the development, with the growth going on there, is we are going to see those lines continue to shift as population grows. And we're going to see ourselves probably in Ward 1 very soon because over the next four, six, eight years, we're going to continue to see that line drift. Overall, the traffic that goes through that zone also, we own that, Reserve Street, and the dangers of the traffic on Reserve Street, and looking how we can improve the traffic flow there or restrict the traffic flow because there's some drivers making some decisions to make some left turns over some areas that are 35, 45 miles an hour. And it's just unsafe, but it continues to be legal. And we need to put barriers in there to prevent those decisions being made in the interest of safety. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Merta.
Yes, I will echo what everyone has said about Ward 2 is by far growth and everything that comes with it. The, the consequences of growth on existing neighborhoods is huge. I have some of my constituents here and they know what I'm talking about. When we talk about growth, that means a lot of trucks passing by existing neighborhoods, a lot of traffic, a lot of high speeds. My concern with the increase in, in growth in my ward is, are we going to be able to provide the services that are needed? Fire protection mainly. Is the school going to be enough for all the added growth that we have in that area? Is the infrastructure able to support all that growth in that area? Are there enough parks and playgrounds? These are all things that stem from the incredible amount of growth that we're seeing in Ward 2. How are we going to do that? Hopefully with a good set of tools such as zoning, zoning regulations, subdivision regulations, and better collaboration with developers and creating some incentives for ensuring that neighborhoods that are existing are taken into account when growing this fast.
All right, thanks. Let's move up over here to Ward 1 and we'll hear from Gwen, then Eric.
So hard to boil this down to one issue because Ward 1 is very large and very diverse, like economically speaking. But if I had to choose one, I would say, you know, from my conversations with people in the north side, the thing that, again, I keep hearing over and over again is the pedestrian bridge. I think it's kind of symbolic of a lot of the other issues that we have in Ward 1 and specifically those north side neighborhoods. It's very difficult to get in and out of the north side, especially if you're somebody who doesn't rely on a car for transportation. As of now, like, there's really only one way in or out of the north side. And the pedestrian bridge has been closed for a really long time. And it kind of goes hand-in-hand with all the other, like, accessibility issues that have been really, you know, highlighted for me as I've been walking around the north side. It's, it's a very non-walkable area, which is kind of baffling for how flat and like, kind of compact it is, you know? So I think getting some more state and federal funding, there are federal dollars coming in to start work again on that bridge, but I think making that a priority is going to be a huge deal. And in general, kind of increasing access because, you know, I'm fond of saying, like, good things happen in the north side and they flow out of the north side into the rest of Missoula, you know, with like, stuff like the Wolf Street Co-op, stuff like Mud and other projects that have been started over the last 20 years, you know? The north side very much feels like a classic Missoula neighborhood and I think it leads to this feeling of like, the north side being cut off and alienated, which I would really like to address.
Yeah, and I just want to build on that, actually. I've heard a lot of the same things being around the north side. The first time I went to leave door tags, I got rollerblades and I went, I thought that it would be faster to rollerblade from door to door. What I learned in that experience is that the roads and non-existent sidewalks make it very difficult to rollerblade around the north side and drop off door tags. Actually had one of the wheels from my rollerblades fall off because the roads are so bad. So in addition to the Ped Bridge being closed, the bikeability, walkability issues from the north side, I've been hearing a lot about. Because the Ped Bridge was closed, people are forced on the underpass on Orange Street, which is super sketchy. Scott Street is not ridable nor bikeable. It's straight up and straight down the other side. And with Velogio opening, there's not the infrastructure in place right now to move those people around. I know in the master plan, there is a roundabout to connect Russell Street to the interstate and that Zip Beverage area will be redeveloped. That is a focal point in an urban renewal district of intense development, but the infrastructure needs to be in place first so that these folks can move around in their neighborhood because they are very much cut off. One of the things I, I've heard about in the Rattlesnake, which is also part of Ward 1, very diverse, wildfire preparedness. There's only one road going out of the upper Rattlesnake, which is Van Buren and Rattlesnake Avenue. Heaven forbid we have a raging crown fire. It's going to be really difficult to get those people out.
Thank you both. Let's go to Ward 3. We'll hear from Sam first, then Gwen.
Okay, so I'm going to use this as an opportunity to kind of pivot back to the housing crisis because that is the number one issue people are bringing up to me when I knock on their doors. And I'm hearing about it from a lot of different angles. So maybe- So maybe we can talk about a couple. I'll be quick. The first one, which I kind of mentioned before, is I'm hearing from a lot of retired and fixed-income people who are having trouble keeping up with property tax increases and rising prices, you know? And those people, a lot of whom bought really nice houses at, you know, maybe the peaks of their careers, when wages relative to prices were super different than they are today, you know, they're getting their reward. They get to live in this nice house, and they deserve to live there because they worked for it, right? So we want to make sure that these folks can keep living in the places they worked hard for. Some of the ways I think we could do that, one would be, I really want to support a tax credit for retired people to stay in their homes, some kind of local thing that lets them just have a little softer burden when it comes time to pay for these, you know, everything, pay for these everythings, right? Another thing we could do is, a lot of these people are living, you know, maybe just one or two people in a big house, and zoning and building codes are super complicated, parking requirements are Byzantine at times, you know? If we could make it easier and provide some assistance for people to build extra rentable space that they could then make a little bit of money in their retirement with, that would help them out a lot paying the bills on their places and staying in their homes. Other things, before I run out of time here, that we could do to address the affordable housing, just bring more money, more jobs to Missoula, so that we can actually afford to rent the places as prices do go up.
So I really don't like going last, because everybody says a lot of what I would say, but it's all right, we'll cover it again. So for Ward Three, I would also talk about housing. And I hear from folks who, the rents have gone up exponentially historically in, like, the Slant Streets and the University District. There were a lot of people who owned homes, and there were a lot of rentals also, and a lot of university students lived in those rentals and could walk to the university, and it was a great setup. And they are getting pushed further and further out because those rents have gone up. So that's an issue. But also fixed incomes, people on fixed incomes, taxes are onerous, and we've talked about that. But also, I have older folks who are living in houses who would like to downsize, and they can't move out of their house because there isn't a place that they want to go to to downsize, and it gets back to inventory. We need more inventory in Missoula, and if we have more inventory and more options, they'll move out of those houses. And guess who's going to move into those houses? Probably families trying to raise kids who need four bedrooms or three bedrooms. So we have this issue because we don't have enough inventory, nothing's moving, and everybody's stuck, and that really impacts everybody in a negative way. So how do we fix it? We've talked, I mean, we can talk a lot about housing, but having code reform, getting more inventory built, all of these things, as well as more affordable housing, is great. Ward Three is built out. There are some vacant lots, but we're not like Ward Two where there are greenfields. It's built out, but it's extremely walkable, and it's central. So I think we want to incentivize, how do we have more people in Ward Three that contribute to our ward, to the neighborhood character, and make it work for everybody? So that density is a conversation we'll be having with code reform, and I'm looking forward to that.
Great, thanks, Gwen. And thanks, everyone. That was, I was really impressed by that. That's a great set of issues that you brought up, and thanks for your articulation of the ways that you'll address that. So as a moderator, my hallmark is to end on time. That's just what I do. But I've been told that we have a little bit of flexibility, and the questions that I was handed from the audience are fantastic. And so if you can bear with us a little bit, we're going to go a little past seven, because we've got three fantastic audience questions, and we can't skip the lightning round because it's just too much fun. So we're going to push into the, into the audience question round. We'll start with Ward One. We'll go Gwen, then Eric. And the first question is such, 60 seconds. Thank you, Pam. Again, let's just give Pam a round of applause right now. She just, she saved a lot of heartache there, that was fantastic. Yeah, so 60 seconds, again, one minute to answer these, each of these three questions. All right. Question number one, from the audience. The city is pushing our homeless neighbors from camp to camp. Would you support allowed campsites and expand our homeless shelters?
Oh, so that's an excellent question. The answer to me is yes, definitely. So this is really near and dear to my heart, because I do a lot of work with the homeless community, I do a lot of work with Food Not Bombs, and I've been speaking to a lot of people who I really consider to be strong leaders within that community. And the things that they are saying to me is like, yes, definitely a desire for more campsites, more resources to be put into that, because the overall thing that is really needed among that community is a stronger foundation. And that starts with just like having a solid place to stay, not constantly getting swept out of one place, not being criminalized and marginalized, having that kind of thing. And then also just like getting things like public restrooms, getting things like clean needle drop sites, getting things like access to communications, like phones and the internet, you know? Because I think, as you, if you see, like, less marginalization and less criminalization and more of a solid foundation built for these people, I think you're going to see a real desire on the part of them to be better neighbors to the housed community and to be more willing to kind of meet people, like homeowners, where they are. So, yeah.
Can you repeat the question real quick?
Yeah. The city is pushing our homeless neighbors from camp to camp. Would you support allowed campsites and expand homeless shelters?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we're seeing Johnson Street reopen here in a couple of weeks, which is amazing. But that's a temporary solution to a problem that is systemic and nationwide. We have to treat these people with dignity, and I, it's so, it's heartbreaking that people paint with broad brushes about these individual human beings, that we, these are our most vulnerable people in the community, and I think that local government absolutely has a role to play. I was in Victoria, British Columbia not long ago, and they have an interesting park system that allows for overnight camping within a certain timeframe and for a certain amount of days. I think we should explore that. There's a lot of different models out there to allow for camping in some places. I think services like bathrooms and needle depositatories are critical. I also think that there are a lot of services that the city is already providing with its partners, Blue Heron, Crisis Service, Crisis Intervention Team, the HOT Team. We're trying to do our best here, but this is a really complicated and complex problem.
Perfect. End of sentence. Let's go to Ward Three, and we'll go Gwen, then Sam.
It's a great question, and it's a hard question to answer, especially in 60 seconds. I think we're trying to carve out as much capacity as we can with Johnson, with Pavarello, with Meadowlark, the YWCA. There are a lot of different components in town trying to address this problem. We still have a lot of people unhoused. We tipped up the authorized campsite last year. It didn't go well, and I will sit here and be very honest, it did not go well, and we cannot use that model again. No provider in town would run it because of the lack of structure, and that was for good reason. So we have to learn from those issues, look at those results, and figure out the best way forward, but we can't be in a situation where we are authorizing an area with a huge amount of drug use and sex trafficking, and frankly, a lot more. We can't do that. So we are the institution, and we do have to look at liability issues. However, I think we need to figure out what options we do have and how can we go forward. And this is a compassionate community, where we will do our best to not let people freeze in the wintertime, so we're going to have to work on it.
All right, so it's my turn, right? Okay, cool. Hope so, because I'm talking. So first of all, if you own a home in Missoula, if you rent a home, or if you're living outdoors in Missoula, you're a Missoulian and you live here. It's the same question, are we going to take care of people living outdoors versus people living indoors? Yes, we're going to take care of people. So until we have indoor space to accommodate everybody who needs indoor space, you absolutely have to let people camp outdoors, because that's the only other option. Where we put that camp and how we manage it in terms of sanitation and, you know, waste facilities and even security, that's all open for discussion. We have to make sure we nail those issues, because those are important parts. But until we've got enough space and enough peripheral services, you know, including mental health, crisis intervention teams for, for all the demand, and addiction services, et cetera, there's no way that I could in good conscience tell people, no, you can't sleep outside, and give them nowhere else to go at all. So obviously, the devil's in the details. We're going to have to sort out a lot of how this takes shape, and we're going to have to explore a lot of things. I'm pretty excited about one of the current plans that's on the table this week in committee, which I don't have time to talk about.
Thank you. Let's move to Ward Two, and we'll go Merta, Sierra, and Timothy.
Yes, I would, but I think we need to do it well, we need to do it right, we need to do it fairly. We have experience now with the ACS, and I think a lot of learned lessons, and that's not to say that we should never do that again, I just think that we need to do it better, we need to do it fairly, not just for, for us to feel that we're doing it right, but for those who live, who are going to be the beneficiaries of that resource. They need to be in a position where they can get what they need, so they can go on to the next stage in their, in their life. I think that the city is doing a tremendous amount of work in following a lot of other models that are out there to see what we can customize for Missoula. What works in Wisconsin might not work in Missoula, what works in other communities might not work here. So we need to try and pivot and try and pivot again to ensure that we are helping those in need.
Yeah, so the short answer is yes, I did vote last night to open the Johnson Street shelter, and I don't think that that is the ideal solution, but it's the only solution we have in front of us, and so that is why I voted for it. My very first week on council was the decision to close the ACS, and I lost a lot of sleepless nights after that, and I seriously considered jumping ship immediately off of city council. But those are, it's a tough decision, and that was a horrible feeling. I think that, as someone who's lived next door near the Pavarello for over 10 years, I think that we have to really reach out to the community and, and find a long-term solution. So we cannot force a community to accept a certain type of shelter. We have to work together to make it a harmonious place for everyone, and I don't think that the city should or can do this alone. We have to do it with several different partners, and we have to do it together, otherwise we will set ourselves up for failure.
So a quick answer is yes, I support it. Question is, how do we support that? Last year, we allowed the camps, we, on the return on that, we did not get the same community service providers that would support it again. So we're not going to get the trash, we're not going to get the Portageons or whatever facilities we need, because the community companies, the, the service providers, aren't going to support that. Kicking them out of the camp, moving them out of the parks and all that stuff, that's not working either. I think that that was not a, it was a decision that needed to be made at the time, but it was a decision that maybe if we'd waited, we could have come up with something better. And then on top of that, what do we do next year? Whatever we're going to do next year has to start now. It can't wait till next year. It has to be built into the budget, because there's going to be funding. There's going to be other outside organizations that are part of that, but also, is it a city problem? Is it a county problem? Is it a state problem? Where are those funds going to come from? We have to get out there and get ahead of it, plan it, and then get the funding towards it. But we have to have a price tag on it before we can commit to it. And whose back is that price tag going to be on? Thank you.
All right, thanks, candidates. We're going to move quickly to audience question number two. First up, we'll have Sam, then Gwen. We're going to move to Ward Three first. Here you go. High income transit-served neighborhoods like the U District and the Rattlesnake have seen much less multifamily development and more working, than more working-class neighborhoods like the North Side and Franklin to the Fort. What do you think should be done to fix this problem?
We have to allow and promote more multifamily development in those neighborhoods, like the U neighborhood in Ward Three where I'm running. One of the concerns that I've heard from homeowners on some of the neighborhood councils and in Ward Three about this kind of development is how it might change the character of their properties. You know, when, when we hear people say things like, you know, Ward Three is already built out, I do disagree. There's a lot of big backyards, and there's a lot of space in Ward Three where we can still build. Now, how we build, we have to be real careful about that, because we don't want people who, you know, feel like they've really earned their places to lose the character of their places. So if we're careful about how we do it, we can definitely build those places out. We're going to do it through zoning, and we're going to do it through affordable, real affordable housing development incentives, and that's how I would do it. End of question.
So this is exactly why we're doing the Code Reform Project. And if you haven't engaged with that project yet, I hope you do, because this is not the city telling wards what they're going to do, and it's not, it's, the dynamic is, this is a community process and a community decision. And Code Reform is the vehicle that we are using to not only streamline and simplify our codes, so it's faster and easier to build something, it's also updating our growth policy, and, which is already a great document, but updating it and then implementing it, which means doing a lot of rezoning. I think the key is, people in town need to understand what their neighborhood's going to look like. And if we can have zoning, a lot of this job with Code Reform is, the consultants are going to be able to convey and communicate, if you do this, this is what the, this is what the neighborhood will look like. And I think it's going to be embraced, and people are going to really want to move forward with it, and it's going to be good for everybody. So I think we're on the path, we just have to finish it.
Thanks, Ward Three. Let's go to Ward Two. We'll go Timothy, Sierra, or sorry, Timothy, Merta, and Sierra.
So, yeah, part of it is the fact that we have zoning that's in place, we have code that's in place that prevents development in some areas, and we need to get beyond that. And that zoning, those coding, those codes were developed decades ago by a community that wanted it to look a certain way. But wants and needs, the need today is for affordable housing, and we can't continue to worry about what, and that's not fair for me to say, but some people are worried about what they want, some people are worried about what they need. And you need to say the same about deer population in the city. Some people love the fact that we live in a city where there's deer, others complain that the deer don't know the right way to go in the roundabouts. So there's a different point of view for different things. But the need is affordable housing, and the focus has to be on getting rid of the code that prevents us from developing that. Some of it's owned by property owners, and so unless that goes up for sale, we don't really have a say in that anyways. But when that does go up for sale and developers want to purchase that land, we have to make it easy, quick for them to develop, we have to, in some ways, reduce fees on those developers so they can get to work quickly. Thank you.
Go down to Merta.
Thank you. Yes, zoning is the single most effective tool we have right now to make those changes, absolutely, and Code Reform will, I think, provide a context-sensitive design that will hopefully address some of those issues of retaining character while adding more density to different neighborhoods. I also think that transportation is a huge component of what makes an area affordable, desirable. So addressing issues of transportation through our long-range transportation plan is going to be fundamental to, to having a cohesive sort of growth in Missoula throughout different neighborhoods and not just putting a lot of pressure in one neighborhood. I think that most of the time when people are opposed to having additional significant density in their neighborhoods, it's because of what that place will look like and what it will do to the neighborhood in terms of traffic. So if we can address those two issues through regulations that we have in place or long-term plans, I think that we're going to be much better situated to address the, the growth that's needed.
I, I would agree. Obviously, Code Reform is going to be super helpful in transportation. And the other piece, I think, you know, the reasons why sometimes the Rattlesnake and the University seem to have better infrastructure is, is sometimes they're, they're the loudest ones at the table.
Excuse me, sir, thank you for that, I appreciate that. Just reading the audience question as, as written, so, yep.
Okay. So the question is that there's not enough services in the Rattlesnake?
There's more multifamily development in more working-class neighborhoods than there is in the Rattlesnake or the U District. How do you plan to fix this problem? Would you add 10 seconds for a question?
Yeah, so we, you know, everyone wants to talk about affordable housing and different developments. It's going to have to happen in every single neighborhood, and it's going to have to happen in every single ward, and we have to hear from every neighborhood about these issues. Franklin and the Fort has seen a ton of development, same with the North Side, and we recently saw a development go up in Miller Creek, and we heard from so many people about that development. But we, we don't hear very often from folks in Franklin and the Fort or in, on the North Side, because sometimes their voices just aren't as loud, and I think that that is a, a big piece of it as well.
Thank you, Ward Two. Well, let's move last but not least to Ward One. We'll go Eric and then Gwen.
Yeah, as mentioned before, I think that this is a zoning issue, first and foremost. That is where the development is allowed to happen or not allowed to happen, and I think we are going to be addressing we are going to be addressing that through zoning and code reform. I agree that affordable housing is a big priority right now and that should be equitably distributed across all the neighborhoods. One thing I've really heard a lot from the North Side is that they feel like they're a target for this kind of development. And everybody agrees, I think, in, in part, that high density and growing up, building up and not out is what we want until that happens in front of your house and you lose your view of the North Hills. There was a controversial easement in the Rattlesnake near the winery. Do I think that that land should be into a conservation easement or into development? That's a question of zoning, again, which is where we're going to get that sorted out. But I do think that we do need to look at, how do we distribute that load more equitably across all neighborhoods so that it's not focused on the neighborhoods that are feeling it the most?
So yeah, I do want to say with respect to my friend over there, like as we look at more dense development, which I think is the only way forward for Missoula is, like you say, building up instead of out, we are going to have to look at some solutions that are going to come to problems that are kind of inherent to creating more dense and multifamily housing like public transit. You know, we're going to have to kind of make some investments, some critical investments in that kind of infrastructure in terms of making things accessible to people while we're also doing this. You know, that's, that's a consideration that we're going to have to make across the board as we're kind of taking on these development things, especially because it's going to require things like, I think if we're honest, like creating more dense multifamily housing is going to require taking a look at parking minimums and things like that. So as we do that, making sure that the development that we see in these areas is accommodating the existing neighborhoods that are being kind of saddled with this kind of thing. I also think, you know, the development that we take on as we create more dense housing has to be affordable, you know? I don't think you can substitute luxury developments for truly affordable developments.
Delay there. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for asking, or answering those questions. We are going to move to the lightning round. We're a little over, over past seven and I appreciate everybody sitting here with us. So this is how this is going to work. This is a little bit fun. The, this is going to give you some insight on your, on your candidate's stances on specific issues, but there's not going to be a lot of extra dialogue about that. So this is, this is often tough for the candidates when it comes to answering these questions. So what we're going to do is, Andy, do you want them to write on the first page and then?
Yeah.
Yeah. Write on the first page and then move those pages.
It might be helpful to write on the back.
Yep. So each candidate, grab a sheet, grab a sheet and put it on the back of your clipboard. Yep. Or do the flipping. Flipping is fine. What was that Pam?
The mics.
Oh, the mics. Yep. I mean, I can read off the answers. So we'll collect the mics from you. So here's what we're going to do. We're going to ask a series of questions and you have to answer these questions in one word. One word. And I know that's so challenging because there's, there's not a lot of context there. And so I encourage folks, if you're, if you're concerned about the one word that is written or you're interested to talk about that, then stick around and chat with the candidates afterwards or meet these candidates for coffee and lunch and talk about their stance on these certain issues. So is everyone ready? All right. First page, first answer. We're going to write one word. It's going to be yes or no and you're going to hold it up. The question is as such, TIF or Tax Increment Financing is a tool the city has used to support building projects by providing upfront financing, which is balanced by increases in property taxes on the new developments. Do you think TIF funding has a positive impact on our city? Yes or no? Hold up your answers. And yes, 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 everyone. Everyone see? Yes, 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 and yes. All right. Give the candidates a round of applause for making it through lightning round one. Great. Okay. That's all right. All right. So next, get out a blank piece of paper or just turn yours over. Turn yours over and use the, the other side. Great job. Let's go, number, next question. Passenger rail through Missoula. Are you a fan? Yes or no? Answer's in the air. It's, it's unanimous, folks. We have yes across the board. Great job. Great job. All right. Next, get out another piece of paper. I'm sorry, this is also modality challenging for you as well. What single thing in one word do you think we should fund more of in Missoula? I'll give you a couple more seconds for this one. Hold, hold, hold. Okay. All right. Reveal yourself. Yeah. Can you, can you tell us the acronym there? Affordable Housing Trust Fund, housing, housing, annexation, affordable housing, housing and services. Great job, candidates. All right. Next question. What single thing in one word do you think we should fund less? I like it. All right. Everyone reveal yourself together. We have, here we go. Police, consultants, consulting fees, unsure, consultants, lunches and organizational excellence management. Organizational excellence management. That's the tool, management of the tool. All right. Okay, one, two more, two more, folks. Grab a blank sheet of paper and I'm going to merge an audience question with the lightning round because it was very important to me. In one word, this is, we're going to give you a couple extra seconds. Don't reveal until I tell you. Missoula has always been a city full of hope for the future. How do we empower and engage the young people of this city in new and innovative ways? Many of those young people who are here tonight to listen to you talk about your candidacy for council. One word, how do you empower and engage the young people of this city in new ways? I don't reveal yet. Give you five seconds. Ready, Gwen? Start here. Okay, listen. Stories, participate in government, scouting, transparency, listen, queer joy. All right. All right. Candidates, thank you so much for your participation. This has been really fun. Let's do one more. One more. Best slice of pizza in Missoula. Don't worry about alienating all of the restaurants, just, we have, you have to pick one at this point. All right, here we go. We'll start down here. Bridge, Snow Bowl, Pie Hole, Chicago, Old Chicago, Bridge, Thai Chicken and Pie Hole, that's not one word, and Zimmerino's. All right. Okay. Okay, everyone, let's give our, our candidates for wards one through three a round of applause. Just to, just to reiterate, in Ward One, we have Eric Melson and Gwen Nicholson. In Ward Two, for the two-year seat, for the two-year seat, we have Sierra Farmer and Timothy Garrison. For the four-year seat, we have Merta Becerra and Rebecca Dawson is also running. And for Ward Three, we have Gwen Jones and Sam Kula. A couple notes before we close. I think we've learned a lot here tonight and I really appreciate it. Why don't you give yourselves a round of applause for coming out and supporting democracy We'd like to thank our volunteers for making this happen. We have to give Pam one more round of applause because she made this thing run. And thank you to the Missoula Democrats for supporting this and getting a grant for MCAT to get this on the web so that others weren't here tonight can, can watch it.